Good morning, everyone. We're having a good time here on the front row. No, that's fine. I'm glad to hear. I'm glad to hear people laughing. It makes my heart feel good. Welcome to the Mobile County Commission meeting, August 24, 2020. I will open with a prayer. We'll do a pledge of allegiance and then we will get right to work, if that's okay. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for sparing us from those storms. We pray for the people that are in the path of those storms, Lord, that you protect them and give them coverage. Lord, we thank you for this county. We thank you for this city. We thank you for the leadership in the county and the cities, state and in federal level, and we pray for them all. You tell us to pray for our elected officials, and that's what we do. We ask you to bless this meeting, guide this meeting, and your work be done, in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which descends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I never say the pledge in here, I don't think, of John Pathemback, because you can pick his voice out of everybody steering the pledge. All right. Dana, do we have any speakers?
Good morning, Commissioners. No one has signed up to address the commission today.
Okay. Let's get right on it then, Mr. Glenn.
Okay, Commissioners. Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 27, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen in the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in public fund balance.
So I'd like to call to order the, see if anyone's here to speak for or against a statement of revenues, expenses, or changes in the fund balance report. Anyone here to speak for or against? Okay. Glenn, move.
Number four, hold a public hearing to consider the recommendation from the Small Business Relief Grant Program Committee to award grants to 20 local businesses that are experiencing financial hardship with the COVID-19 public health crisis located within Mobile County, Alabama, for the purpose of promoting the economic and industrial development of the county in accordance with Amendment Number 772 of the Constitution of Alabama.
Call to order a special meeting here for the Small Business Relief Grant Program. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? I see you up there, Mr. David Rogers, Chamber of Commerce. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. And thank you again for allowing us to come in and talk to you today about this program. I am here to speak for these 20 applications that the Volunteer Committee has provided as a recommendation to this commission for approval. I will tell you that today's total numbers of the 20 today is over 150 employees and total grants of $130,070. I will tell you that while we went through the review process of the grant after we got about halfway through and saw how we could certainly help out more companies, you know, at the request of this commission, we really took a step back and really looked at our methodology and how we could really spread this money out further, and so we're excited about this. I will tell you that there are a few at our new allotment of $10,000 that are on here. And how we actually came up with that for our methodology is these companies represent the 90th percentile of employees of applicants. So we took all of our applicants and made a percentile for everybody based off the number of employees. And so these companies are in the 90th percentile of the applications. So we felt that they had a significant impact to this community and were really in line with being able to get the maximum awarded of $10,000 now for this grant. I will tell you, we have, last week, the committee met again, and will be coming up in a future meeting, but to date, the recommendations from that committee is 93 total applicants, so 93 companies, that represents $851,000. And so that was 37 last week that we have provided. That will be advertised and for a future meeting for this commission to look at as well. In total, that represents over 625 employees in our community. And so really, when you start looking at these numbers and how big the impact is of this grant program that was formed by this commission, again, you know, your leadership and seeing this has truly helped these companies to keep these employees going and keep these families thriving during this time. That's unprecedented for so many of these small businesses. So again, thank you for your leadership, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I'd just like to say thank you so much for being here and for that excellent report. It really, this grant program is doing exactly what we intended it to do, and that's to provide a lifeline to these small businesses and to spread it out as much as we can, and that methodology that's being employed by the committee is doing exactly that, so thank you very much.
Absolutely. David, did we ever get any of the other companies in town to chip in with us? I know we had hoped to.
We, yes, sir. We continued to ask. Unfortunately, we did not. I think a little bit of that was there were a lot of people with their hands out into a lot of our private industries, a lot of entities, nonprofits, that were looking for help during this time as well. So I think we had a lot of competition, truth be told, on some of this, and so unfortunately, we were not able to receive any additional funding.
Knowing that, I would do it over again.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, Glenn?
Number five, approve awarding of grant funds to the following.
Did you get a vote on that?
Just a public hearing on that one.
Oh, just a public hearing?
Yeah, the next one's the vote.
Actually, this says approve. Unless I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Yeah, that was four.
Number four.
Oh, okay.
Now we're on.
I'm ahead.
Okay. Number five, approve awarding of grant funds to the following 20 businesses in the following amounts that are experiencing financial hardship with the COVID-19 public health crisis within Mobile County, Alabama, for the purpose of promoting the economic and industrial development of the county in accordance with Amendment Number 772 of the Constitution of Alabama.
So moved.
Second.
No.
Number six, approve investment purchase of the county funds by the treasurer for July 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve appointment of Reverend Christopher Lee Williams, Sr., to serve on the Board of Review for the Junk Control Ordinance for District One, replacing Thomas Nelson.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve contract with Greater Gulf State Fair, Inc., in the amount of $25,000 from District Three funds for operational expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve contract with Constantine Engineering, Inc., to provide professional engineering services for the Mount Vernon Water Treatment Plant upgrades project, pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve authorizing Tina Sanchez to be added as certifier to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management E2 Discharge Honoring Report System.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve grant, excuse me, approve acceptance of sub grant award from Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Law Enforcement and Traffic Safety Division in the amount of $42,229 for the period of May 24, 2021 through June 6, 2021, for the 2021 Click It or Ticket Law Enforcement Campaign.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve acceptance of sub grant award from Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Law Enforcement and Traffic Safety Division in the amount of $506,545 for the period of October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021, for the selective traffic enforcement program.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve acceptance of sub grant award from Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Law Enforcement and Traffic Safety Division in the amount of $61,176 for the period of August 20, 2021 through September 6, 2021, for the fiscal year 2021 Drive Silver or Get Pulled Over Enforcement Campaign.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve acceptance of the sub grant award from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Law Enforcement and Traffic Safety Division in the amount of $179,592 for a period of October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021, for the 2021 Hotspot Impair Driving Enforcement Campaign.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve contract with Madison Consulting Group in the amount of $4,000 to do an actuarial analysis of the county's old self-insured workers' compensation program.
So moved.
Second. Real quickly, what is that for? Is that so we can figure out if we can close some stuff out? No one here to speak on it? That's okay. I'll find out on my own.
Number 16, approve contract with Madison Consulting Group in the amount of $2,000 to do actuarial analysis of the county's general and honorable bill liability program.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve change order number one with Robert J. Baggett, Inc., new facilities for Mobile Community Corrections. The change will delete temporary parking improvements, and the credit of $39,980 will be added to the project allowance.
So moved.
Second.
Question. What is the status? Does anybody know? Tyler's not in here.
Oh, we can get him in here, Commissioner.
I was just wondering what the status of the community corrections construction. We have a timeline on that yet?
Kind of like Groundhog Day.
Morning, Tyler.
Morning, Commissioners. That project's going very well now that Baggett's taken over, and we expect completion early winter and start occupation of the building maybe December, January.
Okay. All right, very good. I just wondered what the new timeline was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we vote on it?
So moved.
Second.
I think we did. And, yeah, we did. Then I ask a question.
Number 18, authorize advertisement for bids project isolation kennel building for the Mobile County Animal Shelter.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, approve recommendation of the Board of Review for the Junk Control Ordinance hearings held on August 11, 2020, for the citation as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve sponsorship with our sister's closet in the total of $1,000 to be divided among District One in the amount of $500, District Two in the amount of $250, and District Three in the amount of $250 for its purse with purpose event.
So moved.
Second.
21, approve contract with Feeding the Gulf Coast in the amount of $16,000 from District One funds to provide food for 1,500 families at the September 12 Census Awareness Event.
So moved.
Second.
22, authorize sub-reception agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Southwest Alabama for the term of August 24, 2020 to December 31, 2021, in the amount up to $110,000 of community development block grant funds to provide a homeowner home emergency repair assistance program.
So moved.
Second.
Number 23, approve amending contract with Olive J. Dodge Elementary PTA to change the purpose of funds to purchase technology equipment.
So moved.
Second.
24, hold a public hearing to consider the project development and construction of a multi-tenant center at the intersection of McFarland Road and Cottage Hill Road with an estimated total capital and investment of $13 million, and to construct certain road improvements dedicated to public use for an estimated cost of $600,000 in accordance with Amendment Number 772 of the Constitution of Alabama.
So we need to hold a public hearing now?
Yes, sir.
Like to call to order a public, call to order a public hearing meeting on the development intersection of McFarland Road and Cottage Hill Road? Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Yes, sir. I can't see your face, but if you'll step up to that mic right up there and introduce yourself. Good morning.
Thank you, sir. I do know two of the other parties involved that live in the subdivision that this joins, and I'm just the only one available. We're really in the dark about what this is, so I'm just trying to get a little information. It says subdivision. A regular subdivision would be, you know, be confined. It doesn't look like that large of a place, but, so our concern is this apartments. The only time we've come close to getting a little information was the preliminary surveyors had heard Retirement Home. So we would like to just kind of know what this is, since this is in between our subdivision and a Mobile County middle school.
And what's your name, sir?
Jack French.
Okay, Mr. Jack. This is actually, is Jay Ross here?
I'm here, Mr. Carl.
Are we, are we able to discuss exactly what it is?
Absolutely, yes. You were welcome to.
Okay. This is going to actually be a public grocery store. It will be, the way I remember the plans being laid out, the back of the store will actually be towards the school, and the store will be facing Cottage Hill and McFarland from the back corner.
That is correct.
It'll be a very nice development. There are no apartments.
Yeah. Well, I did hear that yesterday, and like I said, it doesn't look big enough for a big Publix, but if so, I want a gate to it, so I mean, I like Publix, nothing wrong with that.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, I got my information.
Well, good, good.
Thank you.
We've been working on that project for, well, it's been a number of years, but it's been at least five years from today we've been working on that project. But we'll actually, the county, this money here that we're talking about here will actually be a turn lane that's added, and in the near future, you will, when I say near future, I'm talking about four, five, six years, you will see Cottage Hill widened from Dolls Road all the way to, how far does it go? Does it go past McFarland? The widening of Cottage Hill?
I'm sorry, what was the question, sir?
The widening of Cottage Hill between Dolls, and how far does it go? All the way to?
It will go probably 800 feet west of McFarland Road.
Okay.
And in that same project, Commissioner, we're also widening McFarland Road from Cottage Hill Road northward all the way to Jeff Hamilton.
So we're going to improve the traffic flow through there, because we know it's a.
So it would go to the corner of Jeff Hamilton and?
I don't believe it'll go quite that far. It may go a third of the way past, maybe a third of the way to Jeff Hamilton.
The development that we're talking about here for the Publix is probably maybe 1,000 feet to the north, probably a little less than that. The five-lane roadway project that we're talking about will go all the way probably 800 to 1,000 feet north of Jeff Hamilton, and probably 800 to 1,000 feet south of Cottage Hill. Cottage Hill will go probably 800 to 1,000 feet west of McFarland, and then eastward all the way to Dolls Road, so.
Okay. And we do have access to those drawings and those plans. Will that be on the 2020 pay-as-you-go?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that'll be part of the 2020 pay-as-you-go program that you'll vote on in November.
Thank you, sir.
But there's a lot of improvements for that area, but that is a Publix. That is not an apartment complex. If it was an apartment complex, they would have had to actually have a community meeting out there. We would have encouraged that, because, I mean, just the density out there and putting an apartment complex would be a nightmare.
Well, Publix is going to probably muffle it, but, you know, we're close enough, we can hear the bales that calls in middle school and the announcements, so.
Well, that's, I'm sorry to say, that's part of progress, but there's going to be a lot of mamas that's going to be proud to have that Publix right there on that corner.
Well, like I said, I may need a gate.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Take care. Thanks for coming and speaking to us.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Commissioners. I think there's a little confusion. My apologies, but we do have two speakers.
Okay.
And you all haven't came to this item just yet, but I don't know if you want to go ahead and address it before we get to the item. It's item number 53.
Who have you got?
The speakers are Jay Strong, Jamie Strong, and Gina Danzy.
Okay, so this is on some plaits?
Yes, sir.
Let's wait till we get there. Maybe go ahead and get them in here. I can't see.
They're here.
Okay. Just hold tight and let us get to 53. We'll get there pretty quick, and then we'll let you speak, okay?
Yeah, I'd heard about the Publix, so I, you know, I'll find out about that later, but all I hear is McFarland, and I am hard-hitting anyway, but she'll speak me out.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right.
All right. Number 25, approve pursuant to the requirements of the constitutional amendment 772, the execution of a project agreement with CHM Mobile LLC regarding the development and construction of the multi-tenant center at the intersection of McFarland Road and Cottage Hill Road with the estimated total capital investment of $13 million, whereby the county will reimburse the developer up to $250,000 in the public funds for its construction of certain public roads improvements to accommodate safe and efficient ingress and egress to and from the multi-tenant center.
So moved.
Second.
26, approve renewal maintenance agreement with Sigma Office Systems in the amount of $5,000 for a period of September 2, 2020 through September 1, 2021, for printers for probate court.
So moved.
Second.
Number 27, consider taking the following action on bids. We do have some changes on the fifth one down. It's bid number 112-20. Commissioner, we're going to hold that until further review with the evaluation by the Mobile County Sheriff's Office. And the last one on page nine, the license commissioner has changed the number of cop printers on that. It reads approve purchased one instead of two printers, and it'll be for a total amount of $173,057.
So moved.
So you mean Revenue Commissioner?
I'm sorry. I said the License. Revenue Commissioner.
So moved as amended.
Second.
Number 28, approve renewal of hardware and software contract with Blue Alley in the amount of $9,092 for the Dell compelling for the period September 1, 2020 through August 31, 2021, for the Sheriff's Office and Metro Jail.
So moved.
Second.
29, approve renewal of software maintenance with GOQ Group, Inc., in the amount of $850 for LP360 for the period October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021, for the county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, approve 36-month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation of One Sharp copier from CPC Office Technologies in the amount of $90.36 per month for the treasurer's office.
So moved.
Second.
Number 31, approve purchase of a queuing system from HSHI International Corporation under Omnia Partners Public Sector Purchasing Cooperative Contract in the amount of $52,239 to minimize wait time and help crowd control for the Revenue Commissioner's office.
So moved.
Second.
32, adopt a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between the county and the town of Dolphin Island for debris removal and monitoring services pursuant to regional accounting contracts subject to legal review.
So moved.
Second.
33, authorize preparation preliminary official statement and other actions necessary and appropriate to present refunding bonds and refunding warrants for the commission approval in order to refund some or all of the county's outstanding general obligation bill American warrant series 210A, general obligation recovery zone economic development warrant series 210B, general obligation refunding bond series 210C, general obligations improvement warrant series 212C, and general obligation improvement warrant series 2015.
So moved.
Second.
34, authorize preparation of preliminary official statement and other actions necessary and appropriate to present for commission approval up to $30 million of limited obligation revenue warrants secured solely by the county's revenue under the Gulf of Mexico Energy Security Act of 2006.
So moved.
Second. Put me down as I know on that one, Glenn.
Okay. All right. The following are changes in the precincts. Agenda items number 35 through number 40 will be the changes in precincts. There's only been, there's only one addition, that's agenda item 39, and to that, they want to add precinct number 51. Commissioner, did you want, you have desire to take those all at once?
So what is it with 39? I'm sorry?
39 is just adding precinct number 51.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we can take those all at once, Glenn. I don't think there's a problem with that.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, adopt a resolution altering the boundaries of precinct number 47 and precinct number 48 by merging. Oh. I should have said.
I think that was included. Okay, so we go into 41.
Okay. Starting with 41. Recommend adopting a resolution authorizing requests of the Engineering and Public Works Department to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list declared as surplus property.
So moved.
Second.
42, recommend authorizing to advertise and receive bids for Project Old Highway 43 Resurfacing Restoration and Rehabilitation.
So moved.
Second.
43, recommend authorize the acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owner for the following project, Dolls Road, Track 23, G. Clinton Bossman deed.
So moved.
Second.
44, recommend authorizing to advertise and receive bids for Project Philogim Road Gray Drain Basin Page.
So moved.
Second.
45, recommend approving the Mobile County Fiscal Year 2021 County Transportation Plan in accord with the requirements of Act 2019-2 Rebuild Alabama Act.
And kudos to our engineering department for all the hard work they've done on that. So moved.
Second.
46, recommend approving agreement for the installation and/or operation and maintenance of traffic control signals and/or roadway lighting with the state of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for the installation, operation, and maintenance of traffic signals and preemption devices at the intersection of US 98 at Snow Road North in Mobile County. Reference to hold harmless agreement from the City of Sims to Mobile County Commission approved in the August 10, 2020 minutes, agenda item number three pertaining to the preemption devices.
So moved.
Second.
42, 47, recommend approving agreement for the installation and/or operation maintenance of traffic control signals and/or roadway lighting with the state of Alabama acting by and through Alabama Department of Transportation for installation, operation, maintenance of traffic signal preemption devices at the intersection of US 98 at Ching Dairy Road in Mobile County. Reference to hold harmless agreement from the City of Sims to the Mobile County Commission approved in August 10, 2020 minutes, agenda item number three pertaining to the preemption devices.
So moved.
Second.
48, recommend authorizing to advertise and receive bids for resurfacing and striping of Sam Lewis Road from County Road 96 northwesterly 1.04 miles.
So moved.
Second.
49 was voted at the special meeting.
Commissioners, I might add that the Sam Lewis Road was part of your fiscal year 2020 Rebuild Alabama Transportation Plan.
Thank you. Number 49 and 51 are voted at the special meeting. 52, recommend approving preliminary plat, plat only of Maxwell Metals Phase 6.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a speaker for 53.
Ladies?
Jamie Strong and Gina Danzy.
I'll let you talk to Gina.
Okay.
All right. So what we are requesting information about is the reserving of lots 1 through 4 in Livingston Estates.
Okay. Dana, would you bring Matthew Barcliff in, please?
Dana, would you bring Matthew Barcliff in, please?
So this subdivision of property is taking four previously divided lots and recombining them into two lots as part of a proposed development. There is, we have received a set of plans for a, an apartment complex, and a representative from the engineering group is here today, but this is just the division of the land ahead of that apartment complex.
So which set of these plans are we looking at?
We are looking, should be the third one in the group. It's called the re-survey of lots one through four of Livingston Estates, Herndon Hicks and Associates. The title block is on the left-hand side instead of the right-hand side.
Okay. So have you got someone here from the engineering firm to talk to us about the-
Let me get-
First of all, is this the final plat or we, is this just a vote to, to look at it?
This is the final plat. This is, they would record this and it would be, it would divide, re-divide it into the two lots.
Okay. What type of apartment complexes are we looking at?
That, Commissioner, I'm not sure exactly. We, since we don't have any zoning, we don't necessarily look at a type of apartment complex other than it's a multifamily, a multifamily. As I understand it, this is an L-shaped building with fifty-six units, three stories high, with amenities around it. Let me get the gentleman, see if he can-
Sure, please.
In fact, we may want to look and see, I believe that you, the commission has already approved the funding for this apartment complex as well.
Uh-huh, so that tells me what type of apartment complex it is.
Good afternoon, my name's Lee Rambo with Jade Consulting. We're the Silvian Engineering Firm for this development. Happy to answer any questions you might have on the plat.
Did y'all consider having a public meeting with the neighbors around there and talking to them about this development?
No, sir, we have not.
Have you considered it?
We haven't had a discussion with the developer about having one.
Okay. Well, I suggest we put, put voting on, on this until you've had a chance to look at that, because I think the neighborhood around there has a chance to hear. Quite honestly, this has got me totally off-guard. I don't know where I've missed it, but I've totally missed it. So I propose that we put this particular one off until we've had a chance to talk with the neighborhoods and the development around it.
Yes, sir. So we need to, you're going to hold it over till next month and we need to try and schedule a, a public meeting?
We'll, we'll, we'll hold it over until you have a chance to schedule, you need to schedule the public meeting and you have it with the neighborhoods.
Yes, sir.
That's what I've done in the past with the other apartment complexes that I've wanted to move out in that area and actually hear from the neighbors and, and get an idea. Let them understand what you're trying to do. And, you know, that's, that's the biggest, that's the biggest, because people hear apartment complexes right now and they panic. We've had traffic issues out there. We've got congestion issues, especially right there in front of that school. That's where this is going, is right in front of the school, correct?
Yes, sir, it's across the street from school property.
Yeah, we've already got tons of traffic issues there going on right now. So Commissioners, I would suggest that we actually pull this one on the Livingston subdivision and give them a chance to, to have a public meeting. Am I okay to do that, Jay?
I just have one question before we do that. Matthew, have they satisfied all of the requirements for the final plat?
Yes, ma'am. For the subdivision plat, they have satisfied all the requirements.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to pull this Livingston Estate plat, and you're more than welcome to, I didn't catch your name, the engineer, I'm sorry.
Lee Rambo with Jade Consulting.
Okay, Lee. You're welcome to contact me at my office and I'll help you put it together, but I think the people in that neighborhood have got a, and around this proposed site have got a right to hear what's coming.
Yes, sir. Is that anything that could be tied with our land disturbance permit versus approval of a plat?
No.
Because it's a site development item?
I'd like to give the, the neighbors around there a chance to speak before we approve anything further.
Yes, sir.
Okay? All right, so Glenn, you want to reset it for the next regular commission meeting? Hopefully they'll have covered that base by then. I don't think we need to set it until they do it.
I certainly don't have any problem at all with an informational meeting between the developer and, and the neighbors. I'm just wondering if they've satisfied requirements, does the county really have any discretion in this matter? To, to, other than asking for a delay?
If they have satisfied our subdivision regulations and, you know, based on some other compelling reason, the county commission is obligated to approve the subdivision of the property.
So I would recommend that if, if we're going to hold this over, let's set a date certain at our next meeting, and that's two weeks, so that should give them an ample opportunity to call a meeting with the, the neighbors. I don't know that this could be delayed indefinitely because of what our attorney is telling us. I, I don't know.
Our next regular scheduled meeting would be, of course, the fourth. The biggest fear I've got is I understand the traffic flow at that intersection is horrible. Unless we, we plan on improving that, that intersection and widening like before this- My, yeah, that's why, I, I see your head shaking, I know that. So we're going to have this volume of traffic before, three to five years before we get our road widened in there. So, so that's, that's the real issue here is traffic flow. That's, that's for me. I know the neighborhood, neighbors may have a different spin on it, but for me it's traffic flow. Yes, ma'am, I see you up there.
Commissioner, this has been in front of the commission several months ago. This is part of the Alabama Housing Tax Credit Project. An underwriting has been done on this, and the developer did contact the community. We have it on record.
They didn't contact us.
That's not correct.
Nobody in our community has heard anything, so that's not true.
How did that con-
Wait, 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 if, if she says that, I think she's saying what was represented to her, and maybe what we need to do, if there was a, whatever that kind of, whatever that, um,
Communication by the developer, absolutely.
And make, see, who was notified, when, and all of that, so that we, so we at least as a commissioner know what, what has been done.
Will do. We have it on record.
Because I'm just saying, our subdivision is directly behind that, and nobody in our subdivision was ever contacted. So I don't know who, what subdivision y'all contacted, but it wasn't-
We did not, the developer did.
Well, the developer never contacted anybody in Livingston Lane Estates, which is why we're here.
What was the method of communication? Did they do mailouts?
They did mailouts, they did, they did conferences at the senior center, they met people.
The senior center where?
Sim Senior Center.
For McFarland and Cottage Hill?
This is for the Lantana, right?
I think you might be on a different topic than what we're talking about.
Lantana Trace?
Yeah.
So the Sim Center's-
Nowhere near us.
We haven't.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's-
Yeah.
Seven, eight-
That's in my district. This, this is in your district.
Yeah, that's, that, Sim Center's in her district.
I apologize, it's another, it's another project that I'm talking about. It's not- Lantana Trace, sorry, sorry, sorry. Lantana's Trace did receive tax credit money, but it was not with our home funds, so I apologize. We're doing off another project.
I was wondering how I missed it that bad.
No, no, I apologize. We did have Lantana Trace last year, but we did not fund it.
Okay, let's do this. Let's put this on hold until I've had a chance to look at it. I would like for the developer to, to, to prove to me either A, they have reached out to the neighborhood, and I may not be within my legal bounds or not here, but I'm still telling you what we need. We, we've, we need a neighborhood that will work with us and not against us. And we need a traffic flow system there that will encourage people to want to move out there, not discourage them from wanting to move out there. And we have a traffic nightmare going right now at that school. And to throw an apartment co, how many units are, are we talking about?
Fifty-six.
It's only one building. It's fifty-six units.
So that's going to be roughly a hundred more cars?
On, on the high end.
Okay.
The, the units aren't that large to accommodate two-hundred additional vehicles for fifty-six units.
All right.
To my, to my knowledge, all the, you know, engineering site-wide stuff has been addressed through the, through the county's engineering department. We've addressed any of their comments they've had. Obviously, we'll reach out to you after we've talked with the developer to see if they've had any private communications with the surrounding development outside of our knowledge and try and address any other questions that county staff may have.
On the next agenda, but if, if these things haven't been addressed on the next agenda, you'll, you'll see me try to move it again until we get these things addressed, because these, these folks have got a right to know. They've got a right to be addressed.
The, the item that's needing to be addressed is us having a public meeting with them to listen to their concerns? Am I correct in that matter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I'd also like to know how they reached out to these folks, if they have. I thought that was part of the projects that-
We were, we were required to mail out notices of the plat that is before y'all right now. The project site itself is unzoned county. The permitting process through that is through staff review and approval.
So you're out of Northport?
Sir?
I say your firm's out of Northport?
No, sir, our office is here in Fairhope, or, or in Mobile, but our office is in Fairhope, Jade Consulting. The surveyor who prepared the plat is out of Northport.
Okay.
And so we just submitted it and are here for representation, answering questions.
You have anything to add, Dan?
So we have no money in this. No wonder I haven't heard about it. That makes more sense. Thank you. Okay. I would still like to hold that over. I would like, I would like to address it with the neighborhoods. I think they have a right. I, I still say they have a right to know what's coming. Can I do that, Jay?
I, I, I would recommend you hold over two weeks and, and at the next meeting and ask that they have the public hearing. I think that's about all you can do.
Okay. Please, let's have a public hearing. I mean, it's not required, but the commission wants it for the benefit of the citizens to know. Are y'all okay with that?
Yeah. So, so I'll, I'll move to approve all of the plat approvals with the exception of the final plat and re-survey of lots one through four Livingston Estates correction plat, which will be held over for two weeks. Correct?
Sounds good. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And y'all feel free to contact my office and we'll, we'll, we'll try to get everybody together.
Thank you. So I do have a question. So what if, like, you know, people are against, like, people in the neighborhoods are against the development of the apartment complex?
Well, at the end of the day, we have to follow what the law says, and if they've, they've met all the, all the permit issues, if they've, they've met all the requirements that are, that are, that are bound from an engineering standpoint, we can't stop it. But we can at least let everyone know what it is and get some voice in that. Maybe you can change it, maybe you cannot. But, but the fact I want to hold it over, I'm trying to get the developer to address you as a, as, as a group in some form, to, to let you know what it is, because, you know, we got those apartments, cottages that went at Schillinger's and is it Hit Road? Forget the name of the road. Real nice apartment complex. Those are high-end apartment complexes. That may be what we're talking about. I don't know.
I don't think this, that's what that is.
Well, we're, we're going to find out. That's the reason we're going to hold it over.
Our property values, it's, you know, like a section eighty-four, a complex, you know, lowering our property value and our, you know, plus the traffic. It's public, you know, and you're putting under-
But, but as a county commissioner, my, my issue is traffic. My, my issue is traffic flow. So that, that's what I want to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, it appears that we've got three weeks before the next commission meeting, so that will give us plenty of time to mail out whatever notices that we need, so.
Oh, are we on one of those months where we-
Yeah, I think so, actually.
We've actually got three weeks.
The second and fourth Monday, so sometimes we get an extra week.
I'm sorry, I may talk over you.
Sorry, I'm through, I was just chatting.
So is, is, is it our responsibility to mail those out, or is it the developer's responsibility?
If we're going to put a plat for consideration on the agenda, we have to mail out to the adjacent property owners and let them know that it's going to be up for consideration, so we have plenty of time to do that.
Okay. All right.
Did that not occur already?
Yes, we had to do that for this meeting.
That's what I thought.
But if we're delaying it to the next meeting, we just needed to make sure we had enough time to do that, and since we've got three weeks, we've got plenty of time.
Okay, well, I'll change my motion to hold over for three weeks then, till the next regular meeting. I said two weeks, but it'll be three weeks.
We knew what you meant.
I know. You have to be somewhat intuitive on this commission.
Okay, Glenn?
Number fifty-four. Recommend approving to furnish and deliver six loads of number fifty-seven stone to the town of Mount Vernon. Estimated cost is four-thousand-three-fifty-thirty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Number fifty-five, recommend approving supplemental agreement number one with John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc. for project West Lake Road North, increasing the contract by six-thousand-four-seventy-seven-sixty for larger aggregate surfacing to reduce the tracking of mud and dirt into the local streets.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-six, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreements for Track Three in amount of four-hundred-and-eighty dollars and Track Fifteen in amount of one-thousand-two-hundred dollars for project Joyce Circle Lloyd Road and Williams Road.
So moved, second.
Fifty-seven, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easements for Track Two in amount of three-thousand dollars for project Snow Road and Broadton Road.
So moved, second.
Fifty-eight, recommend approving relocation agreement for relocation of waterline facilities in conflict with proposed roadway improvements within county right-of-way with Grand Bay Waterworks Board, Inc. for project Hilltop Road and Walter Road. The estimated cost to Mobile County is fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred.
So moved, second.
Fifty-nine, recommend approving relocation agreement for relocation of waterline facilities in conflict with proposed roadway improvements within county right-of-way with Grand Bay Waterworks Board, Inc. for project Nelson Road, Glaze Road, and Rainey Rip Drive. Estimated cost to Mobile County is ten-thousand-nine-twenty-three.
So moved, second.
Number sixty, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Ten in amount of three-thousand-eight for project McDavid Road.
So moved, second.
Sixty-one, recommend assigning a contract for professional design engineering services for Potter Track Road drainage improvements to the Civil Southwest LLC.
So moved.
Second, although that's southeast.
I didn't say that.
You said southwest.
Okay. Sixty-two, it's a long agenda, Commissioner. Sixty-two, recommend ascending to the county's engineers' approval of an extension of approval for the preliminary plat for one year from the previous date of approval, Amelia Lake Phase Five.
So moved, second.
Sixty-three, recommend approving to furnish and deliver eighty tons of number fifty-seven stone to Auburn Middle School. Estimated cost for this work is three-thousand-eighty-ninety-nine.
So moved, second.
And, Commissioner, we have one add-on. Adopt a resolution authorizing the county commission to host viewing and a visual presentation for the State of the City and County Visual Event and payment of expenses not to exceed three-thousand dollars to be held September third, twenty-twenty.
So moved, second.
And sixty-four, commission announcements and/or comments.
Ladies?
None for me?
All right, real quickly, we've got two retirees I'd like to point out. Simone Dixon, Metro Jail, seventeen years, and Keith Wil, Williams, Metro Jail, twenty-five years. They will be deeply missed at the, at the jail, I'm sure. Okay, Glenn, that's all I've got.
Sixty-five, approve request for motion to adjourn until September fourteenth, twenty-twenty.
And we do have an indigent care board meeting. So moved, second.
And now for the indigent care board meeting.
I'd like to call to order the Mobile Indigent Care Board meeting of August the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty.
Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting of July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
So moved, second.
Number two, accept a report from Mobile County Commission of the balance in indigent care fund at July thirty-first, twenty twenty. Funds available, one hundred and thirteen thousand eight sixty-seven zero five.
So moved, second.
And number three, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Thank you. Y'all be safe.